Hey, Kenny, how you doing?
Kenny, can you help get this one?
Good, buddy, how you doing?
Hey, I don't take much of your time, obviously, to talk to me right now, just to make the start. Uh, can you come down and give me an afternoon or a light clock? Uh, there were a lot of things that you talked to me about.
What did you just say?
Did you hear Sherry?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I'll be around tomorrow.
Sure, I'm on it.
Not on me.
Sure, I'm on it.
Yeah.
Got five minutes? He's got five minutes?
No, I was scared.
Oh, are you?
Yeah, I had a great one.
Hi, Judy.
Thank you, I broke my head, so.
Judy, there's a car house.
Everybody loves tears. Okay, sign in, Judy.
Hi, Judy.
Okay, sign in.
Just don't be thrown in.
Thank you. That's another whole announcement today. You all, you're, you all kind of, you have a big case. Thank you.
I'm glad you're here. One people has a word.
I'm sorry.
Come on, everyone up here.
Oh, you're surprised?
Please sign in.
Amanda. Amanda, that's the last gentleman, if you want to make it.
Oh, sure, yeah. Four o'clock, call me in. You guys please sign in.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
This time I'd like to ask everybody, please remember to move your devices. Roll call. Um, Harvey Moore.
Here.
Richard Berger.
Here.
Anthony Piper.
Here.
Kevin Powell.
Here.
Robert Warden.
Here.
Uh, Barry.
Here.
Sherry Sager.
Here.
Public comment, um, time limit is five minutes. We'll start.
Do you want the paper for the order?
Yeah. All right, is everybody on here? All right, we'll start. Sam Rockstein, five minutes.
Just here to observe.
Okay. John Plantar, Woodlandburg.
Um, I'm okay.
I'd like to, but I won't.
Um, Marco Trissell at Langhorne.
That'd be me. Other couple of them, that's a major incident. Bonfires. And it's sometimes it's very burning, oh, ours.
They're, they're in the borough?
Yes.
In the borough? There's a, there's a no burn ordinance in the borough, so what you have to do is call the borough office? Call the non-emergency number for the Westfield Police?
I did.
Oh, you did?
I'm not aware. I'm not aware. Are you aware that? I'm not aware. I didn't, what happened was, I called them, I told them it wasn't an emergency. Policeman that was on duty tried to call me, I didn't hear my phone or anything, twice. So, my neighbors, they just, they hadn't been burned or anything, but they What's the other? Hadn't shed any. Yours? Theirs.
The other thing too is, if, if it's happening, you can call the borough office and we will send them out a notice, sometimes they just don't know.
Do we have an ordinance officer?
We have, we have, we, uh,
You need to drive past there, tell me what you think.
Is it very often that you do that?
Yes.
I think we already have some violation notes, but I'll double check.
I may get a pile of wood stacked up. The ripped fence. You gotta drive past, let me guess. And you ready for me again? Can we do anything about the other end of, uh, can we call the city and tell them fix your road? Or Langhorne?
We could, I don't know if it would happen.
That's terrible.
We could try, yeah.
That is terrible.
Uh-uh.
It's just
There's nothing they can really probably do about the city. And we don't even share that, and we're, some roads we share half of, like Mill Creek, but we don't, we don't share that portion of Langhorne, that's the city up to that point. I know, I, I always try not to travel on that road.
One more thing, I apply for handicap parking. Because I've had a few problems with, I was operating one, I have a immunodeficiency, taking body parts off.
It's in the, it's in the
You're right.
It's on the agenda.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, Larry Povey.
I was here last month to talk about the dangerous intersection at Olive and Orchard Street. And I have a request to please take down the sign, except right turn, it's now on the stop sign there. That intersection's been assigned different wrecks over the past years. And was just wanting to follow up with that. Second, with cars coming up the street, that's where a lot of the accidents happen. And would council consider a stop sign at the top of Olive Street? I know you might say, well, it's too steep, but over on Floyd, where Floyd goes on the garden there, it's a lot steeper at that stop sign. That would slow people down, because people coming up the street cut the corner on the left, go into the other line, other lane, people coming down now that they can not stop. They're coming down so fast, they fly out into the other lane with people coming up Olive. My neighbor actually found some information, I have two copies here, that on dangerous roads, roads can be liable if there's accidents there and they haven't taken all steps they can to make those things, so just ask for consideration for those two items.
We have to be very careful with just placing a stop sign to control speed, because it's not, it's not in a wall, and it's kind of stupid, but that's what it is. You can't put a stop sign if the slug's on these downs. It has to be, uh, it has to be crude, so we can check it out.
There was one just put on Gardiner Street around the curb, not sure why that was put up, but that, you know, that appeared out of nowhere, and so you are putting stop signs up, so consider a stop sign.
Thank you, um, Carol Pitman, 102 Delia.
Yes. Um, I was here last fall when I'm back again, because I'm frustrated with the parking on Delia Street, and you were gonna move it to the other side, and I've had visits from various people telling me it's gonna be addressed, but it hasn't been addressed. And it all started, and I didn't have anything to do with it, and I brought some pictures for you. Here is a, um, a Corvette that has been there for 15 months, it can't move, it was towed there. It does have an antique plate on it, but according to the, um, vehicle code, and I got this from Frank Worms' office, he's, it says that a, um, vehicle that's physically inoperable, and it doesn't move, it hasn't moved, uh, the tires are flat and everything, it slept more than 48 hours, it can be towed, and it's still sitting there. There's the picture of the car. Then there's a boat trailer that has pieces of roof on it, roofing, and it's licensed on Oklahoma, and it, it is, it re, um, the registration ran out in 2021. I don't know who owns it, but I would think they have no business being parked on our street. Then there's a third trailer, and I can't tell how long it's been with the registration, it's a Pennsylvania registration, but it has, um, tires, engines, and all kinds of stuff, it looks like a safety hazard to me. The third one is registered in California, and I can't tell when it expired. But it's the third trailer in front of my house, with a car and a handicap parking sign. So there's those ones, and now last night, a new one appeared. And it's registered in Pennsylvania, but it expired in 18. I have been patient for 15 months.
We did it.
I have not been any kind of a problem to anybody, I call frequently to the office, but I'm not even gonna get into what the house looks like across the street, but I guess the zoning officers are dealing with that. But I am very frustrated, I have an ex, I can't mow the grass. I'm almost 69 years old, I cannot mow the grass with that hill unless I walk on the street. Those vehicles have not been moved since before the leaves were blown, last fall. And they were there last spring, some of them. See, I'm shaking his head, I, I'm frustrated. It's an attractive nuisance and someone gets hurt, you can't say you didn't know. And why would vehicles be allowed to be there that are out of state and out of registration is beyond me, I have called the police, I've talked to the police, and the last time I talked to them was when I was here at the meeting the last time, and they said, I can't talk to you anymore, we're gonna deal with it, that was over six months ago. And I, I had to shovel more snow this winter, because the fog wouldn't get near the end of my driveway. It's, they're, they're right at the edge of my driveway, on both sides. I would like something done, I asked about having a reduction of my taxes, since I live in a junkyard, but I was told that's not possible. I bought my house through Cyber Realty, and they assured me that West wants a nice place, I moved out of the city, but you know, Johnstown City would not put up with this, here's their ordinance, it's about this kind of junk. You don't I'm paying top dollar to live here, and I'm living in a junkyard, I have no
Move. You heard me, move.
No, no, decorum, come on now, and she's got, she's got Your honor, order.
So, I, I would like, I'm coming to you, and I was also told that maybe I needed to get a lawyer, I'm not gonna get a lawyer and sue. If I was gonna sue somebody, I guess I would come against the borough, because you're not doing your job. I live there, I pay taxes there, and I shouldn't be in a place where it's unsafe, all that junk. Look at the pictures. So, I, I would like some kind of a plan to do something. I've been told this is gonna happen, but nothing happens. 15 months, 15 months, I've been patient, and I've been kind, and I'm and I've never said anything bad to anybody, and I won't. I've had things posted on Facebook, Johnstown Renewal, Revive, whatever it's called, I'm not a member of it, but I'm called an effing Christian. I, I'm a pastor, they listed the churches I serve, they said they were gonna call the churches that I serve or write letters to them. So I had to stand up and tell the churches that I serve what's going on, and show them pictures. This has put me in a very uncomfortable position. And I, I'm, I'm upset. And you know, old ladies get their needle stuck sometimes, and I'm an old lady, and I know that, and my needle was stuck. But we, you gotta do something for me, you gotta do something for me, this can't continue. It's just not right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, John Plantar, I wanna forward that to the, uh, James, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, Nancy.
Hi, I'm Nancy Gaboric. I live at the corner of Hirschburg and Delia Street. I probably would reiterate exactly what Carol has told you all so far. On top of that, we've had our own problems with our next door neighbors. We've been to court two times already, and we're going again on Monday at the county courthouse. The last violation that I saw, that I thought maybe the borough could help me out with, was Mr. Plantar is leaving the alley and cutting a, uh, a V into because he can't make the turn, he's cutting into the property there at the corner of the alley and Delia Street. Now, I know there's so much frontage that the borough has, but we still maintain it as a responsible taxpayer and owner of a nice piece of property. That has been dug up all the way, fortunately, there is a telephone pole on Delia Street, and he cannot go farther than that telephone pole. But with the mud, and the rain, and the dirt, and the dust, it is terrible. Now, yes, we can feel that, my husband would be willing to pay somebody to put dirt, level it out, but to what avail, it would happen again. Living at the corner of Delia and Hirschburg, and having these problems with our next door neighbor has been nothing but anxiety for longer than the 14 months that some of those vehicles have been on Delia Street. We're subjected to verbal actions, like the neighbor throwing fingers at me as I drive by, verbal altercations with my daughter. I went to college in the 60s. I'm not immune, nor am I surprised at any language that someone would spew forth. However, that means that the language that sometimes we have been well, exposed to, would make, to quote an old saying, a navy sailor blush. It's awful. And that's what I live with at the corner of Delia and Hirschburg. I know I've called the borough several times, so has my husband. I know the borough is trying to do everything they can. And I know it's been slow, because you have to go through all the hoops and do everything, polish the teeth and dry your eyes. My next door neighbor is very smart, and so you have to be very careful, I appreciate that. However, I'm like Carol, I wish we could do more to make our lives better. Carol said she was
How old?
69.
I'm much more older than that. And the anxiety that older people have over genes now is even more so than when I was younger. Maybe when I was younger, I could bounce back more and laugh it off sometimes, but it just churns inside you. So I appreciate any help that the borough could give us, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. John A. Plantar, 204 Delia.
My father's chosen to speak, so he's gonna use his time now, and then I'll speak after him.
This whole situation up there has really gotten way out of hand, way out of the line. Okay? It's been going on at least four years. I've gotten threatening letters from Mr. Gaboric, okay? My opinion of it is, anytime I ever spoke with him, I never had a civil conversation with, he would get very, very abusive with me, and eventually, I did not want to talk to him. I spoke with Mrs. Gaboric on the phone last winter, she was very, very amicable, we had a very, very, what I thought was a good conversation. Now, what has happened, okay? She's coming down here and crying to you people, but why does she have to walk into the courthouse? That supersedes all of these killings down here, okay? She wants to take me to court, and I'll tell you the honest to God truth, I have $3,000 out in a piece of ground that I'm not allowed to even park in. That's what the court order is. And then they turn around, if I park in there, they call their attorney up and say, hey, you're in contempt of court. And I gotta go to court, and I gotta pay 600 bucks, I gotta pay their, their attorney's fees, you know? When this first started out, they, I got this thing from, 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 from their attorney, from attorney, uh
Messina.
Messina, okay? And they said, oh, they took care of it, they cut the grass, they come over and shoveled the snow, they did all this stuff, and took care of it.
Never once in 46 years.
Never once in 46 years have they ever cut a blade of grass, shoveled a thing of snow under, it's called, um, adverse possession. I should have had the whole alley, because I need it, it goes to my garage, okay? Why are the trailers out on, why are the trailers out on the street? Because I can't put them in the alley, I can't put them somewhere else, that's why they're out there. And furthermore, if it has a license plate on it, the license plate gives a vehicle the right to be on the road. You can't tell me that it doesn't. There, I do have a solution to the problem, but I don't think they want to hear it. What I really think should be done, it should run back, I should get the whole alley, because of what they've caused me, the, the stress and everything, they should pay all the fees, give me the alley, because there's, there's, there's arbovidas up there that are in the right of way of this alley.
So is the fence.
So is the fence, and part of, part of the court orders that are stated, they're not allowed to be in there.
They're also building.
They're building, and it should be moved. Now, every time you get a, a big bug somewhere, hey, you call up, you call up Rick Messina, you know, uh, contempt of court, okay? The grass, the grass up there's three feet, you're not taking care of your half of it, like it was supposed, that's what Judge Creedy said, oh, and, and, oh, Bill would always if Bill is so much adamant about this, why isn't he here right now, speaking his voice like I am? This has gone, it, it's gotten out of hand, Nancy, way out of hand, okay? Tell me, tell me, what do you, what, what, give me a suggestion, what do you think I should do?
Now, direct your comments to the council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ask the council, what do you think they should do?
What do you think I should do, you tell me? You know, and I hate to say it, and I'm gonna be quite honest about it, I got a letter from you, Mr. Carbonara, that said that Southmont was washing their hands with this, with this completely, it's a paper alley, we don't care, it's your problem. And then what happens? Now we got, all you people care about here is that the neighbors flit with each other, and that's what's created here. Tell me, tell me, can you give me a solution to this problem? Can you? What do you mean?
I can.
Tell me, which, what is it?
Why don't you remove your vehicles, why don't you not keep cars on the road? That, 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 yeah, you asked me what the solution is, I'll give them to you. So, if you would be a good neighbor, okay? And remove your trailers and the cars that don't run out of somebody's front yard so they can utilize, number one, number two is, Judge Creedy vindicated my position as it relates to the paper alley. He confirmed, and listen, you guys screwed up your own order, the original order that you received from Judge Creedy simply said, don't block, don't block the alleyway. I was correct, I was correct that it was a paper alley, and you had, you both had dual use over it, all he said is, don't block it, you obviously continued to block it, they took you to court because you were blocking it, he found that you did block it, he found it a violation, he made you pay a fine, he made you pay their attorney's fees, I don't know what you're going back for before, you can continue to use it for ingress and egress, and you could park those trailers in the back, you just can't park them in the alleyway.
Where am I gonna park them in the back? You can't, you, you can't park them back there, tell me where I'm gonna park them? It's a big cliff like that, tell me.
Don't you have a garage back there?
That we can't use. Like, of this, okay? Here's the situation, my, no, stop, 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 my time, my time, he's on my time. Put it down, put the gavel down, put the gavel down, no, wait, 46 years, 46 years it's been our alley, shush, 46 years, it's been our alley, it's been our driveway, for 46 years. Anybody, please acknowledge that, shush.
You have the floor, you do not have the floor.
I'll do no time.
Are you done?
No, I'm not done.
Okay, well, you have 17 seconds left.
Okay, I bought that house March 11th, 1977, I've maintained, took care of that, as an egress, ingress, whatever you want to call it. That piece of ground back there serves, there's nothing that he really needs that for. There's not a garage, there's not a house, it was a piece of ground, and furthermore, he did it out of spite, is why he did it all.
Thank you. All right, so now we have Joanne
Now you have me now.
Plantar, well, I don't have your name on it.
My name's Oliver, John A. Plantar, that's all I know.
Plantar on here.
See, first of all, you have Big John, now you have me.
Go ahead.
First things first, sorry about the little outburst, you know? For 46 years, for 46 years, I have cut the grass on, keep calling it alley, my driveway.
Hasn't this been settled in court?
No, it hasn't been settled in court.
When your dad just confirmed, whatever Judge Creedy determined, supersedes what we do, so he can determine it was a paper alley.
Okay, fine, okay, fine, no problem, no problem, no problem, no problem.
Go on to the next.
Next thing, okay? You guys recently enacted, um, the Universal Building Code, okay? Universal Building Code states that, uh, 105.4 states that if you reuse materials, you can't do that without approval, does anybody here, I know you have, have you ever reused a 2x4, you can't do that without approval, the codes guide from Carrolltown now. It says it in the codes, it says it in
We're all, we're all up to that.
Uh, no, you didn't, because I got, I was subject to this, okay? Here it is, I was subject to it. You don't want to even invite, because you're the one that did it, huh? Who did it? I want to know who's complained, okay, why? Accessory structures, okay? Both accessory buildings on the, on the property need a, a weatherproofing on the exterior, okay? They're weatherproofed. All inoperative, unregistered, and/or unlicensed vehicles need to be removed from the property and approved by a hauling disposal company stored at a garage. Keep all invoices, the trailers on the street also need to be parked in the property. I've spoken with the chief of police, my vehicles are the delete part, they are insured. You have no proof that my Corvette runs or doesn't, do you? Have you ever seen it? Have you, do you know if it runs? You don't know if it runs, so stop saying you know it doesn't run, okay? Has anybody here ever knocked on my door and said, hey, what's the problem, John, okay? Everybody comes down here and complains about this, but has anybody ever written a check? Has anybody written a check for the taxes, to pay for the taxes, so you do have to say, no? I have rights, I have rights, okay? Doug, I feel like I'm being persecuted, so take out your hand off of me, okay? I've had it, okay, 46 years, okay? You guys have decided to come and make these stupid bullshit laws, okay? Okay?
Yeah.
I, yeah, go ahead, I have a freedom of speech, okay, I can say bullshit, just like I Yes, I can.
If you have, you better not.
Okay, no, I haven't, my time isn't done yet, okay? Okay, no, I haven't. My time isn't done yet, okay? Just like I can scream four letter words. Excuse me. I would like to address my government grievances. It's my first amendment protected speech, okay? No! I don't have to relax! I've had it with this. Forty-six years I watched you people just scuff on him!
If you continue the way you're going, we're gonna have you removed from the meeting. Bring it down.
John, you can talk the trees just peacefully.
Forty-six years.
I know you can do it.
Forty-six years I have sit, I have watched this government push my parents. I asked for a handicap plaque from my mother, but she's gonna speak about here in a moment, I'm pretty sure, okay? That because of the situation, we needed it, okay? I told them where it needed to be for her, and there was an assessment done of all the handicap pla- of all the handicapped, handicapped faces. But you know who's handicapped to be removed? One, hers. Why? Because people complain. Please, here I am. Here I am right now. Tell me what the problem is. Me? Then fine. Pay me the roof. Buy us out and we... Buy, I am, I am, I am, buy, you did, you, buy us out, you say you, buy us out and we'll move. Buy us out and we'll move.
I'll start you out. Fifty bucks if you can drop the Corvette around the block right now.
Fuck yourself. Pick the bucks. Go fuck yourself.
You said it, so I'll, I'll go fuck myself.
This is not an interact.
I don't have to prove it. I don't have to prove it. I have the right, okay?
One minute left, John. You've got one minute left.
I have a minute left?
You've got one minute.
I'm sorry that you guys have forced me to be this way. I am seriously one of the most mellow people. I, I promise you. I, I'm serious. You, you don't know me. Dean does a little bit, okay? A year ago, I weighed four hundred and forty pounds, and I've lost a hundred, I've lost over a hundred and fifty pounds. Not through surgery, not through anything, by, by busting my ass, okay? And I'm proud of myself, and I'm just tired of watching everybody pound on us. That's all.
I want a question, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, wait.
Can I, wait, wait, can I do something here?
Go ahead.
We got an email this morning from John Clancher saying about ignoring e- emails. One part of your letter, it states, pretty clear, nobody researched what Morgan Heemeyer did because you are all fools. Keep pushing, see what happens. I consider that a threat.
Well, good, it's not a threat.
And I gave a copy to the police, and our solicitor has a copy. I want them to look into it because you addressed this email to the Borough Council, the mayor, and the borough manager.
You don't think...
You threatened us.
Oh, did I?
You threatened us.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
What you said in this email.
A threat would have...
And I want the, the police, the police are gonna research it and see what has to be done.
I did research it two months ago when you brought it up, because I asked you to spare.
Was that a threat? Was that a threat? No, it wasn't. I didn't say I'm going to do anything.
See what happens.
Yeah, I said, "See what happens."
You know what Marvin did?
Yeah, I know exactly what he did. I am aware, well aware of what he did.
Took a bulldozer and knocked down some buildings.
Yeah, that's right, he did.
Okay, well, that's terrorist.
No, it's not. I didn't tell, let's make something clear. I did not say I am going to. I did, let's make something clear.
I'll say.
Let's make something clear. Thank you. I never said I am going to.
I'll say. The police will look into it. However, we will have to prove criminal intent. Currently, John doesn't own a bulldozer, so I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just making a point.
I am, I want it, I want this to be part of our minutes.
That absolutely will be part of your minutes.
So if something ever happens
I understand.
To anybody in council or employees
I fully understand.
Or even residents. They, or this Carol, uh, anybody.
I understand.
You're on notice.
I am.
You are on notice, and our solicitor's on notice.
I documented when you gave me your report, uh, fifteen fifty-three, I believe that was.
What was that?
When you gave me your report, I documented the time you gave it to me.
Okay. And it better show up at the police commission report. I want this noted here, too.
I can't tell you that. I'll show up at tomorrow night's police commission meeting, but, but...
He's the chairman.
I understand.
Sounds like political retaliation.
Tomorrow night is the meeting, so I, whatever. It'll be there. I will take your report tomorrow.
You're gonna get some fresh air in the borough here for a couple of months. Judy, you're on next. Did you want to say something?
Um, something on lot of the street about people parking on their front grass. Um, means starting to look like a suburb, not a suburb like Judy.
I just want to say...
I know people have driveways on the front, but when you have a driveway and then there's, uh, two other cars parked on the grass, it just doesn't do a lot. They don't have an order. Uh, most of them try to take care of it, their own, and, uh, there's room on the driveway for two or three cars, and I don't think people should be working on their cars and grass and, uh, seeing what they have to do.
Thank you, Judy. Terry, I'm wondering.
Oh, I'm just your office. Okay. I, I get you.
It was an interesting meeting to pick. Patty Christopher, um, Lila Street.
Are you, uh, still planning on limiting the parking on one side?
We're, we're looking at that, and we are going to bring it up again at this meeting.
All right, well, um, I have some invisible disability. I have a support group that needs it at my home. If my friends can't park close to my house, some of them park on you, um, so that's my concern with that. Um, we recently in February had a fifteen-by-thirty-eight foot built, complete garage delivered from our home, and there was no problem with any cars that were parked there, and no trouble getting through. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Fire trucks can get through when they do the parade. And, um, the other problem is, um, the tree in front of three oh six La and tree in front of my home on three oh eight are dead. My tree is not that large, but I've been calling for over a year and a half about my tree and Hip's tree. Um, Hip's tree is really dead. It's going to fall on my car because sometimes I have to park in the driveway. So it, it's a safety concern, and there are a lot of wires there, too.
Um, the shade tree committee has those on their list.
I have that on the list.
Well, I've been calling the shade tree committee for a year and a half.
Okeydoke. Thank you for your comments, and we'll take them into consideration. Okay. All right, um... I think I did. Did I get everybody on the...
She has this.
But I, I mean, I, I don't know what's on. Nobody else can speak now?
I need to speak.
Oh, okay. I haven't checked off already. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, and I'm going to put this mess close to me because I had dental surgery and, uh, my teeth, right now. Um, first of all, the handicap spot, it's a sign that I paid for. Um, I can't use because it was moved because somebody else wanted it moved. That's number one. The second thing is, Mrs. Gaboric, uh, et cetera, okay, have complained. I am afraid to sit out on my front porch because their daughter stands in the middle of Delia Street, talks on the telephone about all the help that they have given us and all the things that they have done for us, and about how horrible my son was as a child, et cetera, long enough for me to hear it, and I'm sure all the other neighbors hear it, okay? Um, she has come onto the property, even though she has been told by the police to stay off of our property. I am terrified. I can't go out there on my own, okay? Sit there and enjoy anything because she comes and she screams. Bill sneaks around by the arbovidas, okay? So I never know who's going to be there. He's also come on my property, okay? I'm terrified. I can't see. I cannot see, so therefore, I cannot go out on my front porch on my own, okay? If my son isn't there, if my husband isn't, ex-husband isn't there, I can't do this, okay? Because I'm afraid of my next-door neighbor. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for everyone who took the comments. We'll all be taken into consideration. Uh, at this time, I mean a motion to accept the resignation of Eric Munster.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Election of officers.
I would like to nominate that various presidents.
Do you need a whole slate or just...
Do we need a whole slate?
Uh, you can do it, uh, I prefer to do it individually.
Okay. I make that motion.
Wait a second.
I'm starting now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that Jerry Spiker remain vice president.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
And I'd like to make a motion that, uh, Bob Morgan remain as pro temp.
If he already is, you don't need to do it. You don't have to make that.
Oh, okay.
No, he's not.
All right.
He's a darian.
It's snug, it's snug right now.
Okay.
So I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, is that what you need to do there? Thanks, Doug.
Congratulations, Doug.
All right, so the, uh, next thing on the agenda is appointment to council to replace Eric Munster.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Eugene Capcella. Eugene Capcella, he ran for council. It looks like he's probably going to win, so I think it's probably less logical.
Oh, I will second that.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Walker, Bob Walker. He's a great candidate in council.
We just have, we have to do one at, one at a time.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. So, if you guys want to debate this, I would recommend, it's a personnel issue, you would probably go into a section and session to discuss the possibilities of who you, who you'd want to appoint. Uh, again, that's a council's pleasure. There was a, a motion on the floor, so let's follow through with that motion first. If you guys want to go through with that motion, that's fine. If you guys want to discuss it, you guys can rate or do whatever you want to do. At this point, there was a motion to appoint, uh, Eugene Capcella. Like, that was a motion. Yeah, and it's been seconded.
I thought, I thought the floor would be open for any nominations. That's more than I would.
Well, I, I understand your point. I, I already gave my answer, which is, there's a, there's a current motion on the floor, uh, and it's been seconded, so I guess there's a question on the motion. You're asking, uh, if you could otherwise have a debate. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but... I don't make the decisions on it.
Let's vote on the motion.
I think we should vote on the motion.
All right. Does anybody else have any comments?
No.
All right, we'll take a vote on the motion. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Uh, now we're going to take, uh, a moment, uh, just a, a moment of silence for Sergeant Michael Bevlar, who passed away last week. All right, thank you, and, um, Dean, if you could express our sincerest condolences to the... All right, correspondence. Uh, we have a, uh, letter request, um, for, from...
Yeah. How would I do that?
Uh, to, uh, return two zero one Lila Street to a single dwelling.
Um, is there two water sources to, to, one?
One water, one zero.
One water, one zero?
Um, it's been that way for a while. There was a tenant there, but I guess there's, there's a huge age between the two or something, but the letter never got to us saying that it was returned to one. Um, so now I guess that's just what he's requesting.
The board's been updated?
Are all the bills paid up to date?
Well, that's what he's, there is, there's an outstanding balance because there's two of them. Um, so he's asking that we eliminate the one because it's been a single family for a while, but it's gonna be turned in the notes.
Why didn't he get to a single?
We know...
I mean, he...
My suggestion would be to, uh, maybe investigate it further, so if you guys have any questions or answered, maybe aid, confirm. I, I know we've done this in the past where the people who made this request, we just simply asked, you know, that we could send someone down to kind of confirm the configuration and confirm that what we, what their request is, and then we can make action.
And that also confirms the water authority, just says the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've done that. Yeah, it's definitely one.
So, wanna table this till next meeting?
Whether it's a double or a single, it doesn't affect the taxation of it?
No.
I wouldn't think, but I don't know that for certain without looking at the, how it's assessed.
No more for a single than for a double, let's say.
I think that's probably the start of it, single.
These are amazing on that, but...
Why don't we table this till next one, till we look at some of these things? I make the motion.
I'll second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Tabled. Uh, we also have a letter from Michael Walters, uh, one ten ninety-one Street, request for landscaping reimbursement from Chaney Run Project.
And so for the report pictures, y- y- there was good vegetation on that, and we did, um, approve the neighbors.
Did we have enough?
No, I, oh.
Yeah, it should have attached to twenty eight, twenty...
Twenty-five sixty-three.
I make a motion that we, um, listen for...
I second.
Did that come out of the Chaney Run?
We have a Chaney Run Fund. That comes out of that fund.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
A second. All right, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we, guys, the agenda to include all what's on, uh, somewhat missed in the, um, on, you know, package in the...
My preference is that that gets done at the beginning of the week, so I'm just gonna, like, why don't we just move on with that and have those items definitely listed for the next meeting? If, just, yeah, if we're gonna modify the agenda, it should be done, I think, for after the call.
Get to make a note of the manual behind us on the next agenda.
All right, uh, so next up, we have the minutes. We just need to approve the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
I make a motion.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It should be noted on the agenda if it says the seventeenth, actually, the minutes are the fifteenth.
All right, what's still waiting on the police?
Um, I was just providing information before coming here, not knowing that I was in charge today. Um, but four, I know four criminal incidents occurred in Borough, one accident, and one arrest. As far as that, we'll discuss tomorrow. Um, I attended a two-day training in Baltimore, one of the sixth and seventh, seventh and eighth of, uh, sixth and seventh of this month, and the speed trailer was down for repairs. It had been put up a couple places. It's back up now, so it will turn up here and there.
It's reflective of the budgets. From last year to this year, the, um, the fines have gone up.
Correct, with the use of the license plate readers, that doesn't mean you're generating revenue, it's just the ability to be told immediately, to be told immediately that the plates know that the person run it.
There are a lot of people speeding around up there, so I appreciate everything you do.
Things that have happened during the month, are they repeat offenders? They did hurt.
Um, no, well, we have had a rash of thefts on vehicles. That's mainly people, it's only people with unlocked cars that have uns secure badges in there. Keep sending out reminders to lock your cars, but some people just don't get that, so. The more they can keep coming back and finding unlocked cars, the more they're gonna keep coming back, so, but that is down compared to the month of May.
Yeah, but some of these things, you have one adult male harassment, one adult male prohibitive acts, one adult male public crime act.
Yeah.
So you want, those are repeat offenders, no, I think those are passing through.
Okay, so you catch them going down a knocker or something, I mean, how do you?
Yes.
Do they, like, do somebody call you?
And they would be stopped, or they would be coming up Southmont Boulevard from the bar, and we would have an account, or they'd be a disturbance, we'd call them a disturbance.
Okay, but they're not the same?
No.
Okay. All right.
And I, and also, the document here.
Yes, please.
Can you talk to?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dean? All right, Southmont Volunteer Fire, uh, Company, and first I do want to, um, congratulate you guys on a very successful June lead. Also on the incredible feat of paying off your fire.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the month of May, uh, we had twenty-one incidents, um, as of May thirty-first, that's eighty-five emergencies we've responded on for, uh, twenty twenty-three so far. Um, no additions or corrections to, uh, my report, um, as you just stated, we did have a very successful June lead, um, possibly the most profitable June lead we've ever had.
And the best weather?
We certainly had someone watching out for us. Uh, and then with that, combined with our state grant, uh, fifteen thousand dollars we received, uh, we applied for yearly, we were able to pay off our engine, uh, in four years, which is incredible. Uh, that was approximately four hundred thousand dollars worth. Um, so we now, um, are in the process of reviewing our equipment and our apparatus for, to prepare for what our next steps is. Any questions?
Thank you, Eric, thank you too.
Yeah, it's, it's been a very busy year, uh, last month was a busy month, um, we just, uh, thank everybody for their support, and, um, and certainly, uh, thank, don't miss an opportunity to thank all of our volunteers, and we're sure volunteers, just like everybody else, but, uh, the people we have are fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Chief, I do have, uh, an signed agreement from West Hills, or from, uh, from, you know, the, uh, Westland Hilltop School District.
Okay.
So, if you're, or if you're leaving the meeting, I'll take these, you can take a look at these and vote them on at your meeting.
Yeah, I'll stay, I can.
All right, so let me draw.
Uh, I have the final payment for Chaney Run Project, we did do a final inspection, probably a month ago, uh, everything is seen to be in order. Uh, so this is just a release of the lot, final retainage, uh, the amount being twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Pay as number five, and it's the final one.
And that all came in within budget and?
Yeah.
I make a motion?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, they have their works guaranteed or whatever for a year, but.
There's, yeah, we went to substantial completion about a month ago, and it's, we had a twelve-month warranty period. So, yes, next year, in May, we'll do a eleven-month inspection, make sure everything is grass grew and all that kind of stuff.
Are your, your funds remaining in your hand account?
No, no, he's over.
Yeah, we owe money back to the performance plan.
No, we just released the money here, and we, we get a maintenance bond, which, that's good for twelve months.
You got it.
The one that I was concerned about, um, Harry, who's resigned, so, and now, did you guys show him how to check for some inflows, or is something on the Chaney Run?
Uh, not so much Chaney Run, he was taking care of the wet weather inspections on the sewer side.
So I guess we'll be.
Yeah, Amanda sent us a list, there's probably ten or twelve still hanging out there, when we get the next good rain, we'll, we'll handle that internally, that, that way the work will be done.
So the evidence has passed?
I believe they did pass, yeah, and Harry did five, six of them in the last six weeks, and they had.
Do you know what the status is of the estimates that you guys are getting for Amanda?
Of the building layout?
The roof and the layout and stuff.
Uh, yeah, I, that was here next, so I understand the security work is done, so you, you can submit the grant. Um, but the guys are putting together right now, uh, budget and scope for work and interior fit up. I just reported that this might be our stat. So hopefully here, you know, maybe end of the week, we'll have some numbers with.
I hope it's working on the security, was that the engineers also?
Yeah, they put together kind of a little family.
Yeah. I'd like to get that moving on.
Uh, anything else?
That's all I have.
Or anything else?
Yeah, I might be forwarding to you, and I know it's gonna be my report, so maybe I'll just be quiet, I'm gonna try and record. I'll just be quiet, you're staying a little.
Yes.
Zoning officer report was included in the packet. Mark is not here. Anybody wants to convey that regarding the report? All right, we move on.
Have you ever approved the payment of this, or is it in the bill?
It's in the bill.
Okay, I think, I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up, but.
Under admin.
Okay, all right. Okay.
All right, uh, I'm sorry.
No, you're doing, you're doing.
All right, so, I do, Todd, I'm gonna maybe email you a copy of this, there is a, what I believe to be a, uh, the five G kind of, uh, small facilities request from an Everspring Solutions LLC, and it's kind of under review by myself and Amanda. But I probably will forward this to you, just to confirm, it is what I think it is, I mean, it's talking about fiber optic cable, uh, my thought would be that it's being used for five G purposes, so. There have been a lot of these that I'm aware of, this was my first miss, I've had to receive such a request, so I think it just makes sense from a technical aspect that you review it, it looks like everything is currently gonna be in, uh, I mean, noting the polls appears to be in our right of way, but it seems to make sense to have you.
Sure, yeah, we've seen them in all what expert in the last week, two weeks, so they're, they're starting to become very.
This is Everspring Solutions LLC, I assume they're, you know, either a subcontractor or subsidiary or somebody. All right, so that is, I just want to note, let you guys know, I, you may recall, in a year or two, that we pass an ordinance where we'll be getting revenue as a result of them using the right of way, so. Because it's our first time around, I think we're a little uncomfortable about, not uncomfortable, but it's, it's, it's new for us to review it, make sure they're complying with our ordinance and stuff. Uh, next issue is, you guys may have seen, I don't really want to comment other than probably they get the notice, uh, from Attorney Bob Ryerton related to uh, the alliance of Greater Johnstown, having a property owner, don't really make any comment on validity of what's going on, but I do think as a precaution, we should notify our, any of our ca, our carrier um, of the release notice of litigation, just because, uh, in case it, whatever happens.
We should probably go into executive session.
Yeah, but I just want to say this, so.
We need to do the.
Okay, we can.
Meeting.
Sure. I agree, we can, we can talk about it, yeah, more, more in detail, but we should put our carrier on notice, just a, that's a notice requirement that our policy requires, so we should just do it, just so as a checkbox, so we don't have to worry about later on.
So Amanda needs to do that.
Yes. Uh, and lastly, again, I'll just talk briefly about this, uh, I know Mr. Clincher did file, or he sent an email, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I just thought I'd, I'd make the board aware, even though it's sort of a separate entity. Mr. Clincher did send an email to the Borough when he was filing an appeal related to his own hearing board matter on Violet Street. Um, I did make Attorney Marvin aware of it, so he's, he's emailing the therapy issues, since they're a separate entity, I just, I, I made him aware of it, and he could take whatever action he thought was appropriate and necessary.
All hands. Okay. Any questions for Mike? All right, uh, Borough Manager's report.
Um, so once you guys have questions, everything's going pretty well, that work order system's working, um, but you guys have got a lot done the past couple weeks.
Any questions for Mayor? All right, Mayor's report.
Uh, anything I have is I spoke, uh, this morning, I'm after a walk, I spoke with Mr. Ra, uh, Rocco Giacomo, he has an application here for handicap parking. We mentioned earlier, I do see the agenda, it's coming up shortly. Probably getting this, 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 for discussion.
All right, uh, discussion items committees, administration.
You're right, huh? Oh, I'm is, okay, sorry. Yes, I'd like to bring up about, uh, uh, discontinuing zoning and building code services with Walker Consulting Services and, uh, hire Laurel Municipal Inspection Agency as our building and zoning enforcement people.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Um, can, for the, the record, I believe we're gonna handle these as two separate motions, so the first.
We can, yeah, let's, uh, the first motion should be, I'll make this, discontinue the Walker Consulting Services.
As of nine twenty-two.
Correct, yes.
There's a, uh, ninety day.
Ninety day, we have to give ninety days, so that's my motion.
I, I second.
Your motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then I'd like to hire Laurel Municipal Inspection Agency as the zoning and building code enforcement.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay.
Update on parking ordinance?
Yeah, we do have a request concerning handicap parking. He explained the situation of which everyone's feeling.
I think that's a little further down, that's, that's under streets. You think he saw about the ordinance for no parking?
Oh, ordinance, no park, yeah, that's ordinance, oh, sorry, sorry.
Land of the, some of them.
Yeah, here we go. Now, we were gonna, we were talking, several of us were talking about rescinding the previous ordinance because of all the problems and concerns people had about no parking and so forth, put it back the way it was.
But I do think there were some changes that were made in the ordinance that were fine.
It'd be easier.
Just gonna go, one at a time.
Is this just a amendment? It would supersede.
Oh, I don't know, honestly, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I didn't cross-reference all the
all the streets.
Changes, I did not.
Okay.
I thought this was more for topical for discussion than it was for action today.
I would think, and then send it to the committee, have the committee approve it for our next meeting, and in the meantime, everybody.
There was more wrong with it than right.
We just had a committee about, maybe, not even a month ago, and we thought we had it pretty well, or the sum, but nothing happened, so.
So we should put it under the ordinance committee, or whatever committee that would be?
I think it should be under the ordinance committee, I, I just can't comment, because I, I did not, I was not asked to, like, review or cross-reference it, so I, I did not do that, I, I knew it was under consideration after the comments from the citizenry that you were guys were gonna re-review
All right.
those comments, make some decisions about whether or not.
We need to have a change of committee, we need to work with that ordinance.
We have, Amanda, did you make up this no parking ordinance changes?
That was from the last committee meeting.
And then send that to Mike also, so that he can cross-reference?
Yeah, that's fine, I, I can look what we did prior, uh, I just think it's important for the members, not, not, not like for me, legally, it's easy to change what you guys want to change, I think it's important you guys know the changes that you've made, and you're comfortable with it. What you want to, if you want to make a complete change or partial change, I just, I need to know, just to make sure what those are, that's all.
So I would just suggest this goes to Mike, so he can see the changes and everybody else, and then.
I, I think it would be a waste of time to go back and read the, when we only have a couple of things of problems, we, we deal with problems.
Herb, I would, I wouldn't call this a deal. It's more than a deal.
Thirteen items.
Thirteen things that we gotta change in your ordinance.
Well, and I also think that, I mean, we have, um, a request today for a stop sign at the top of all the, so, I mean, that's something that the committee should discuss.
Right, that's why I'm saying we need a committee meeting.
Right, and then they had a couple of complaints of, uh, I mean, we changed a lot of those signs, but then we only had a couple of complaints, like on, uh.
We had thirteen complaints.
When did they come out?
Were they?
When they brought the last part?
Plus Larry Kehoe's been in here two, three months, and nothing's been done.
Oh, that, yeah, but.
And nothing's been done on Larry and, uh, Mrs. Corey's situation.
So can the, the committee meet between now and the next meeting? After you decide, you know, what the, the proposal is going to be, run that through Mike, so that we can take action on it at the next meeting.
I would say is I went to that now, or streets?
I would be under streets.
Yeah, shouldn't be under streets.
You're, they're at three o'clock, if you're ready, would you say?
Yes.
It'd be helpful to be there in person, to kind of go over the, the map, I mean, that's kind of how we did the first time, we looked at the map. I see the notes that are made here, I don't want to assume I know what, what the, the red and blue. Yeah, the red and blue, I, I appreciate that, they're on there, I just don't want to make any assumptions to make sure.
All right, so, anything else on that, before we move on? All right, uh, Sherry, with the audit.
Um, so we did meet with the auditor, and had a full report, lengthy full report, and, um, everything is good with the audit, we have to tweak a couple things between the, um, uh, garbage and sewer, um, left those in the right, right slots, and so, uh, the audit is done, and everybody had, I think we saved a copy, was that last meeting I got the copy of it? Everybody received a copy of the audit?
We had some leftovers, because people weren't in the audit meetings, but if you didn't, you have a copy, let me know, we have here.
So, the audit is, is done, and that was the twenty twenty-two comment.
All right, any questions on the audit? All right, here up again, Sherry.
Budget and taxes, um, so we had a budget, um, review also, and, um, everything looks, um, good, we had just a couple questions in the new manager, and everything, so far looks good, uh, with where we are here today. Here again, if we're separating the sewers and the garbage, but other than that, we're good, and, um, we will be meeting August for, for new year.
I think we should have a budget meeting, go over the figures, do it for Amanda.
We can do that.
The, uh, before next month.
Okay. And, um, yeah, the, the income is up, but, so we're the, uh, expenses. Okay? Is it?
All right. Community planning and appearance.
No, we did need, good meeting, uh, uh, and Sherry and I, and I attended, along with, uh, Barry Pollster is a professional planner and Southmont resident, we had Chris Allison and Shannon Murphy from the county planning office, uh, present. And we're pretty wide range in discussion, uh, they made it clear that planning for communities is some kind of lockstep process, that was, that is to go. Basically, it's kind of, you know, uh, address priorities and, uh, uh, you know, how, anticipate what you, how you wanna shape your, uh, your municipalities, what a place to live. And now, we went through, there are, uh, grants through the municipality DCD that'll pay fifty percent of the cost of a plan. And all of the DCD will plan for other, will also provide grants for other services. And, uh, more single issue. Uh, what they do insist, or you won't get funded if you don't, uh, work collaborating with adjoining municipalities, I mean, you have to share a border. And, um, I mean, our, their, the state's goal is to, you know, do regional planning, not consolidation, but regional planning, because anything we do affects our joint municipalities. So if you wanna get funded, uh, we, we need to bring in our neighbors. Uh, the county planning commission will assist us with the grant funding. We may be able to get, uh, uh, other money, maybe county money, I don't know. But we have to commit at least twenty-five percent local municipal funds to do this. We're not sure of the scope for the, the fee of this. And then the question also came up, do we wanna, you know, with a whole, probably full council participation, look at a full plan, or do we wanna start, you know, working piece by piece? And they brought up, uh, municipal, uh, services, uh, you know, street commission, you know. They had begun three municipalities, I think, I don't know, but I think it was up to the other, Westmont and Brownstown had begun a municipal maintenance program. And Southmont did not, uh, wish to participate in this, so we did not approve going along with that. They'll say however it was, shut down during COVID, and it's only now, in the near future, gonna resume. And so the question is, do we wanna start working together, join that, you know, look at how other people, our neighbors do, you know, municipal services? And I don't think, I'm not looking for, for any, you know, um, authorization from council here tonight. Chris Allison did offer to come here and address the whole council about, you know, why you want a plan. Among other things, again, it's gonna facilitate your access to grant funding from the state. And, you know, I, you know, we're, we're kinda stuck, you know, okay, or do we wanna join the rich, I mean, the red, Southwestmont Recreation, you know, they have two properties, maybe, that they excited about. But maybe, maybe we create our own recreation program as, you know, as an adjunct to that. I think the, the opportunities are wide open. Um, you know, I, I think we might, as Cherry made a point, that this quickly gets into an area that you're gonna be, you know, I mean, she's not comfortable with our committee going forward with this without kind of council participation. So I wanted to see if you would like Chris Allison and other members of the planning mission to maybe hold a workshop with this body.
I think a workshop would be a good idea before we made any decisions on which one we wanna.
I agree a hundred percent, because I, I did talk to Brownstown about, they were part of that agreement or whatever it was, and they're not participating.
They're not coming back here.
That was never, no, they will never, they will not do it because of the, uh, basically because of the union wages and so forth, they couldn't afford.
We don't.
That was the biggest, that was the biggest thing why they didn't wanna be a participant.
Again, that was an example of do we begin small or do a plan?
Yeah, but you wanted us to get in with the agreement with Westmont and, that's what you were talking about.
I said they brought that up in discussions, but, we're, we're talking about.
Yeah, but you told me on the phone that you wanted us to join that agreement.
I want us to look at, that, what the agreement was a study. It's not an agreement to share services. I'm in favor of looking at what comes out of that study. And it may, you know, then there may be an irreparable or unfixable, uh, difference on, you know, the salary scale that would prevent it. All I wanna do is study this, uh, Kevin. Um, we don't have to start that.
Okay, I guess we should have a, a meeting to work with this.
It's rich, well, we just want to see the working though, and I think what Cherry said, we should look into it.
I think we need to look into it.
Well, I think it would be good if, uh, Richard would set up a meeting with these people, uh, you know, a meeting that, where they could come here and we can all talk.
Right, that, that's a good idea.
Yeah, again, if you, you have a committee, our goal is to look into this, we're not taking action on it, obviously.
It doesn't put this up law.
So I can set, I can work with Amanda to set up a workshop, and Chris Allison.
Yeah, it's within the bounds of the committee, as long as you're not committing funds from the borough.
Oh, we're not.
That's work, and so you can do what you, you can do that.
Yeah, this, this was an exploratory meeting, well, exploratory meeting in front of full council. That sound okay?
All right, anything more?
Not to Shaintry.
Okay. Uh, all right, emergency, Amanda, anything?
I don't know, I'm bored.
Water authority.
Uh, they're still trying to get permits from DEP. It's been like seven years since we applied for some of these permits. Haven't gotten them yet. They're just sitting on them.
The big noise.
We haven't, we haven't tried the political side of it yet.
I was gonna say.
They were, they've been trying to get, go, because once you get into the political side, then DEP just, they clam up, they get worse than what, from what I hear. From what I hear, but they just, you know, they're going over their head and so forth, so, but that's our next.
Big budget here.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about.
Exactly. Um, then also on the, uh, the water tank that's being constructed now, uh, they're working on it. Uh, that should be done, I think it's two or three months.
Westmont?
Westmont tank.
That's there on St. Clay Road.
No.
Yeah, no, that's behind, uh.
The Mala.
The Mala. No, and that's Indian, Indian, Indian Mala, you know what I mean? Uh, they're working on that. Uh, also, they're always working on, uh, duplication of water. One part of the town goes out, another part can, uh, supply the water. From Salt Lake, from one, coming one way, and, uh, more and more the other way. So they're always working on that. Um, there's a lot of one-hundred-year-old water pipes out there. We're always fixing those. That's basically it.
Okay. The woodmill's a dead issue now?
At this point, yes.
All right, any other questions for Kevin? All right, grants, that's me. Um, I don't remember if I recorded on this last meeting, but we did submit the twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
I think.
Um, so we won't hear on that for a few months.
Except for the building?
That is for the, um, what works transportation, um, planning grant, no match grant. Um, which, if having that, if we get funded and we develop a plan, that plan enables us to, we can use that plan as justification for going after larger Penda, also notable pay grants.
You don't have to have any kind of figure what it's gonna cost to you, because I gave Amanda, I called Burns' office and they sent a grant, but we have to have proposals and what it might cost.
Yeah, so this plan's gonna give us some rough information on what we can do. We're, we're gonna take, we can take that plan and, um, assign numbers to it if we work with the engineering.
I think what the grant I have is, we have to get the figures first. And, and then they figure out, well, I give you some.
Was it the paper game?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just to give them information on what kind of grant you're looking at, like what you've applied for, what you're looking to do.
But they wanna add a cost to it too.
Okay.
We have to get a cost, and then they'll, then they'll put it where it needs to go, I mean, try to get money.
Most grants will, um, require a preliminary estimate of cost. And then what you typically do is when you submit, um, that grant application, part of that is final design and that construction.
So the one that we're lying here.
Is just planning.
Right, we need to find a project that we need to do so we can submit a grant.
Well, that's what Todd and I are working on, those big specs for like the roof and all that, so we can, we have that to go off.
We also have the entrances to our sidewalks.
HVAC.
Yeah, HVAC. I, I, I bet we get a firemen to, we're pretty soon here.
Your air conditioner's working, right?
Boy, I hesitate to encourage blind people to walk on sidewalks.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for me? All right, insurance, Anthony.
Nothing, sir.
Uh, sports, arm monitor.
Nothing, uh, nothing, no.
Personnel.
Personnel, um, we did have a resignation of our street supervisors, so, um, are we doing an executive session? Or, I know the committee is in the process. Committee is in the process of changing everything right now, so I think by next meeting, we'll probably, probably be able to, um, come up with some suggestions.
How, or, well, just, I mean, how are you? And, uh, am Harry still working?
Well, we're gonna discuss that in the, uh, executive session.
Oh, will you?
All right, um, police.
I need to report that the meeting's tomorrow night.
Property maintenance and streets department.
Well, um, I had a many tours tonight before the meeting, and I have to commend Amanda for the job she's pulled up. Uh, let's start and look, look up, and, uh, we have a long way to go. We'll be able to start somewhere, you know? The toll booth does start off at seven hundred miles an hour, so we just gotta work our way up, and we just take a little bite off at the time before the law will have the place taped up. It's all happening, so.
All right, and then we have an action item, uh, the handicap parking.
Yeah.
Herb's. Herb's, Herb, you gotta handicap.
That's from Rockon. What about?
Uh, we have it on here as a, he has a request for a handicap parking spot.
Well, he lives on the side of the hill, so we kinda have to try to help him up as best we can, because he lives on the public steps. And that's, he's either down or up one way.
Yeah, terrible.
And, uh, I don't know what the handicap is, it's none of my business, but I think we should try to help him up.
Do, do we have all the documentation we need on that, Amanda?
We do, yeah. We do, he does not have a driver's license.
Rocco, do you have a place that you would, would like to have?
Where I have a park right now, right by the steps.
Yes.
Right, right in this, where this picture is, where this, you know, circle.
Oh, yeah, that was wanting to kinda show you.
Yeah, where, where would we want it?
Is that your car there?
It's not, there's a little curve there, right?
It's the steps there.
Yeah, that's my car.
Okay.
Well, that's an old picture.
Yeah, it is.
It's like right by the steps.
Yeah, it came from New York, so, yeah.
It's a little dog like there, right? Little, little bit of a curve.
So you're saying this one, where it's circle?
Yeah, that, right by the steps.
Right, or you want to?
So, well, my neighbors, I'm having problems with my neighbors. Every time we move, we lose a spot. And that, and I can't, that shady lane's terrible. And living on my side of Langhorn, you can't park in my front, 'cause that's turned down the hill.
Oh, yeah.
And there's no parking now.
So there wouldn't be any fire truck roll with this?
No, no, they turn it up, no, away.
I think that we did need to do a centering, come on down, take a look at it and see if it's be moving, to do, we should grab that.
We can do that, or just make a motion. I just, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the handicap spot.
My second.
Thank you, guys.
And Meredith and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we also ask that we go back up, um, to Dahlia and check that handicap spot and make sure it is what's needed for the disability involved?
It needs to be moved or?
Well, she'll, she'll, Amanda will take care of it. Thank you.
All right, Richard and Shaintry.
Uh, Shaintry, they did need, um, of her, myself and Amanda. And, uh, we had, I think, we might read nine applications for tree, let's say tree removal. And, um, Bob Morgan had offered to go out and photograph, because we, we didn't know what, you know, uh, uh, we didn't have, we don't currently. But the applications go for tree removal, we don't ask them to send a photograph, so we didn't know.
I have a photograph. Yes, I added to the list. There's a few around that are, well, they're, they're, yeah, they're, they're, they're not on the list.
About three oh six and three oh eight.
I would, I think they're.
Yeah, we, well, we're waiting for a follow-up list and condition report and documentation, and we'll act and, except we can, we'll let it. And trying to think, uh, we'd like to be able to offer planning, and again, along with the bare hordes, tree perperment, sure, Amanda will have twenty trees, block some of the gaps. And we're, uh, we missed, and all, uh, everything gone on, we missed the spring, uh, Arbor Day celebration. Um, next time, good to plant a tree, it is in fall, in October, November, uh, so if we have any good ideas or if anybody wishes to suggest me, uh, to, 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 or not, we'll wait, like, next spring.
Can we have the trees evaluated and determine what we can do for action at the next meeting, so we can get some of this stuff moving?
Yeah, we can do that. Um, um, would you like a second opinion and an order of this kind of thing, or is this the committee? Do we, do we have the skills to do that?
Yes, we do.
Bob, Bob, as calm as we can.
So on private property, then the owners are responsible, so.
This is all right away trees.
So these are all right?
These are all right away trees. That's what we're looking at.
Can I also, while we're still in these committees, make a suggestion that we start a sidewalk committee, because we're really having a lot of, um, complaints or issues with the sidewalks, so we need to start getting groups out there, though.
When, when was the last time we did a sidewalk survey?
Before the sewer project.
When?
Before the sewer project.
Yeah, we put everything off because of the sewers. I'm not even responsible for maintaining our own sidewalks, but we, we need to send notices.
Well, I have it in my computer, a list of discrepancies, and they're probably worse now than they were when I did the thing, so.
Be a good place to start. It's just, it's just a suggestion, though.
Mike, do we need an action to create a committee, or is that a discretion?
You can assign it, you can assign it.
It's your pleasure.
Who wants to be elected?
Sidewalk committee.
Why, do you think it's part of streets?
Yeah.
It's part of the streets.
Here, I will just change it to property maintenance sidewalks and streets.
Thank you.
Good idea. All right, uh, new business and full business. Uh, we need to accept the resignation of street commissioner as of five twenty-five twenty-three.
I like that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, we need to approve advertising to be twenty twenty-three P fifty. We need to approve advertising of the twenty twenty-three P FIS.
Make that motion.
Second, but I have a question, but it says upper diamond, the ones from where to where?
That goes from Milton down to Gardner and from Gardner to Beacon.
Wait, wait, Milton to where?
Milton to Gardner. Gardner to Beacon, well, pretty much Milton to Beacon.
Gardner to where then?
Beacon.
Beacon.
The gas company did from Milton to Monarch, so.
I was gonna say, they did a good job.
I'm answering my question.
Were they putting a one inch cap on that?
What's that?
They're putting like a one inch cap on that.
All right, okay. So I, I made a second. Do I have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Call for a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
The other question I have is, can we check and see like where the gas company is going to be or? I can see if they'll give that to me. I need to pave and then have them come in and dig it up, repave it all over.
They do it every time.
It's just.
You do want to confirm that.
Yes.
We try to get them to give us a work schedule. Remember that? And they won't do it, they won't give us.
They won't tell you.
There's a new sheet letting me know.
I mean, I can see an emergency, but if they're playing, that's why they should be able to give us.
You have that?
Yeah, I got it, got it.
All right, so.
Amanda, I just talked to Mike about that because he is a good number to somebody.
All right, so we need to approve opening a fire escrow account for one forty-one Wonder Street.
Make a motion.
Wait, now what's that about?
There was another house that burned over here, they're gonna have to demolish it, so.
It's like three within two blocks. Yeah, another one down, taxes.
So we have a motion.
I'd kind of make a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I just wanted to say, because if I can use still here, the houses on either side, this house is at this close and this house is on either side remained undamaged pretty much, so that was amazing. They were, that it was in your, right off your driveway.
The secrets get there in those five minutes. If you don't get there, you're gonna lose it.
Then it gets worse after we go there.
Thank you.
Our next item is to approve selling the two thousand six Ford F three fifty utility truck.
So which one is this?
That is the long yellow one with the.
Box bed on.
Yeah.
Full bed.
Yeah.
Are you gonna replace that then?
No, so we have that in the budget, we want to get rid of that and get like a small pickup truck to help with alleys in the winter time, but that thing is, it's just easy to build. We need to replace it.
So we need a.
So, yeah, a little smaller truck to follow. Yeah, yeah, we'll see what we can get for this and then try to find later a pickup truck for the disbid.
What do you do that, where do you advertise that in?
You do the disbid.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Business items, we need to approve ratification of payroll, five sixteen twenty-three through six nineteen twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Approved payment of bills, five sixteen twenty-three through six nineteen twenty-three.
I have a question concerning Yarmen's, it says vehicle operation, one thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents. What was that about?
And there were a lot of automotive things on it.
And I have a question about Walker's bill, would you take care of that?
Okay. That was for the one of the four, one of the twenty-one and the twenty-sixteen, even inspections. The twenty-sixteen had some front end work for the ball joints and rotors and U joint.
Like the Yarmen bill?
And I have a question concerning, up towards the top, it has E F T P S. That's some kind of quarterly payment, what is, might that be about?
Payroll point.
That's federal legal.
It's a payroll liability.
Okay.
If you can move, do you have a second?
Second.
I don't have a personal that one, so, yeah, I'll just.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Approved transfers, five sixteen twenty-three through six nineteen twenty-three.
Make a, I, make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Approved treasurer's report for May of twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Accepted tax collectors' report for May twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Now we are going to go into executive session regarding personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
Can I make a question?
No, we're going.